Because that is off and we'll go by Horizon time. Before we start, if you have a cellphone, would you switch it over to vibrate or quiet or totally shut it off? And if you'd all rise please for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much for coming out tonight. First off, Mel says we need to defer an amendment or we have to defer something. Five A, that needs to be deferred to next meeting. And Rennie says that he'd like to defer five B to the next meeting as well. So those items will not be discussed at tonight's meeting. Moving to visitors, we have the president of Virgin's swim team, Bill Clark. We'll turn the floor over to you.
Thanks. I'm gonna sit over here so I'm not talking across. That's alright. So Mel and I were talking about maybe having one of us come in and give an update on how the season went for us this summer. So I'm here on behalf of the swim team board. Michelle is also here. I think those are the only swim team board members here tonight. We had a really great year in many ways. There are a bunch of different ways to measure the success of a swim team and I think the one that impacts the city the most is the numbers of kids that we have enrolled on our swim team. From about two years ago, we had around 70 kids. This year, we enrolled about, I think it was 122 kids was our final roster, which is really great news for two reasons. One, because we think it's a great sport. We want to get kids engaged in it. It's a great way for them to feel engaged with the community and healthy and, you know, the self-discipline and the confidence that they learn, all the great things that you got out of athletics. But it's also good because we're bringing more people into the pool, which helps the pool. More utilization means, not to drum these kids all down to just cash, but it brings more revenue into the pool, which also makes it more sustainable. So we had a great season this year. We tried a bunch of new things this year and we tried a few things differently that we've done in the past. We added some things for our teams to try to keep them engaged. We have a new team leadership group. They call it the Swammer Eye Council and they do great things like they give feedback to the board on important issues. We've done some social events with them. They're talking next year about even doing some spring training or maybe some special fundraising for some of their activities. We added a feature called the Snow Cone Challenge this year where if the team collectively dropped a certain amount of time off of their individual events, that we gave them all snow cones and they met that challenge. Just kind of a fun way to encourage them all to improve their times. We expanded our movie night at the pool. We expanded our practice schedule. Working with Jen and with Mel, they gave us some more practice time when the pool wasn't being used. So we have evening practice sessions that we were able to use to get some of our teams more engaged so they weren't just practicing at seven in the morning, they had an alternative. And we did swim clinics on Wednesday nights, which helped kids to build specific skills and get more one-on-one attention than they would have during practice. So all of these things combined, you know, lots of outreach with constantly, I feel like Michelle and I and the rest of the board are constantly, it's like we're a commercial for the swim team all the time. Every time, anytime you see a kid at the pool, like, hey, how come you're not on the swim team? So we're really bringing lots of kids in. And like I said, by all measures, I think it was a really great season. We had a lot of fun and we have tons of plans for next year. Jen and I were brainstorming a few things over the summer, some ideas for next year. And what I think, the real point to drive home, you guys are good, the real point to drive home is, okay, I'm worried, is that when there's a great partnership and relationship between the city and the swim team, that we, it just, that our contribution to making this a great swim season, combined with Jen and Mel and some of the things that they changed to really make this, I think, a banner season for that pool in general, not just for the swim team. So I've only got one more thing that I wanted to share with all of you and then if there are any questions, I'm happy to take those or any discussions. We have talked, so in the past, I talked about the partnership between the city of Virgin's and the swim team. In the past, we've done things like we purchased an AED to have at the pool, which benefits the swim team to be sure, but it also benefits the city because any patrons can use that, not the patrons, but hopefully the lifeguards. Hopefully, let me be clear, hopefully nobody ever needs to use that thing, but it's there if it needs to happen. We also have done things like, Michelle put a ton of hours in early in the spring, working also with Mark to get that pool up to speed, putting in volunteer time. So we've always wanted to do things like that to build a partnership. This year, we've come up with another idea to potentially help with the swim team, oh, sorry, help with the pool. As a board, we decided that we would offer up to $2,000 worth of matching funds for the purchase of a high-quality vacuum for the pool, an automated robot vacuum for the pool. Right now, it takes Jen many, many hours to do it and as great as she is, she's never going to be as good as a robot that gets thrown in and works all night long. And so we, our original plan was to offer matching funds up to 50%, sorry, 50% up to $2,000 to see if the city would be able to find the other funds. And we want to modify that offer and come back and see if we can find those matching funds. And there's really not much more I can say about it than just that, but I think at this point, the swim team would like to try to figure out a way to find matching funds outside of asking the city to see if we can just find a way to make this happen. So those are, those are the updates. Sorry, I feel like I was just, like, I talk fast.
Any council members have any questions of Bill?
Bill, congratulations on the increased participation and enrollment. Sure, that's terrific. What do you attribute that to? It's a pretty significant spike.
There is a three-part formula to this and I can only, I can explain two of those parts pretty clearly. The third one is, I'll try to get to it, but the three, the one thing that we had, the first thing is building a community around swimming. So when you go by the swim team, if you walk by the pool at night on the swim team night, when there's a swim meet, you're going to see literally hundreds of people there gathered. We play music, we serve great food, there are families sitting in lounge chairs, talking with each other, kids in the back on the grass doing cartwheels and dancing and talking with their buddies. And it does not look like a sports event, it looks like a party. And we do that by design because we have to build a community around this team. Soccer game, so I'm dressed because I have to go coach a soccer practice in a couple minutes. The way that works at a soccer game, you've got one coach, a whole bunch of kids, and all the parents are on the sidelines cheering. Swim team doesn't work like that. We have six kids swimming at any point in time, can only fit six, and surrounded by those six kids are 35 parent volunteers. We have 18 timers, eight officials, we've got people handing out event cards, collecting event cards, running the scoring table, running concessions, running the bullpen to keep all these kids organized so that they make their events on time. So we have to have that community around the pool. And so the first piece of our formula is to really focus on that community. We've surveyed our parents two times throughout the season and really tried to get feedback from, you know, what do the parents want and what do the teams want? Because we were losing teams, they drop out in high school and middle school. We don't want that to happen, we want to keep them forever. So that's the first piece. The second piece is good coaching and we were challenged by the fact that all of our coaching staff had left, not because of, they weren't unhappy with the team, but they had job changes or education changes. So we had to hire all new coaches this year. So the second piece to having a good team is really good coaching and getting enough people in there. And we were lucky to pull together a really good team of coaches who were with us for the very first year. And then the third piece is the one I told you, I don't know, I've always tried to explain this to people and it always comes off as overly corny and sentimental, but there's a certain, I'm gonna try anyway, so bear with me and I won't get choked up. There's magic in that one and if you can find it, if the adults can find it, and if they're lucky enough to show that to the kids, they're gonna chase after that for the rest of their lives. And I think our board has done a good job of focusing on all those things.
Great. Thank you very much.
No problem.
I thought that magic was called vodka or whiskey or something.
Whatever, whatever you have to do after the swim meet's over, you know.
Sure. And I'd be willing to partake in that if, you know, bring someone along.
We've talked about having an adult swim party at some point.
I want to congratulate you as a leader. You definitely have stepped up to the plate yourself and I know it takes a team behind you. You've all worked well. The people that came in the spring and put so much effort in. We have an advisory council that reports strictly to me and it has to do with right-to-know laws and whatnot. That way, it keeps it a little cleaner, faster, and council's still gonna get the same pieces of information, but we're gonna try to make that system work and hopefully next year we'll, in the spring, look to see what other issues, if we don't resolve some this fall, as to how we move forward. And that will be based on what the council decides to do.
That's great. That's great. And, you know, we're poised to have an even better year next year and to continue that partnership. Like I said, I think Jen and I have some things we want to talk about over the winter. Michelle and I still have almost daily conversations about swim team even though it's over. You can tell we're a little obsessed, but, you know, that drive, I think, is, we've got a really good board, they know what to focus on.
You're good. Thank you. Any other, Rennie?
Well, I'd just like to thank the swim team for its impact on the economics of Virgin's that many people don't realize that with the swim team and the meets and so on, how many additional people come into Virgin's and spend their money. And if the swim team wasn't active doing that sort of thing, that wouldn't happen. So there's another great benefit to having a good swim team.
Absolutely. And we're constantly trying to get more kids. We want to talk about maybe possibly expanding our practice schedule next year. It would be great to be able to have 150 kids on the team. I know that makes a lot of us nervous, but we'll see what we can do. You know, for those of you in the audience or listening from home, if you're worried that your kids are getting lazy during summer vacation, sign them up. They'll get more exercise before 9:00 AM than most of their peers will all day long. And now back to your regularly scheduled.
And, you know, you scared me at first when you said it was a snow cone event. I thought you were throwing the snow cones in the water. The water's already cold enough.
Yeah.
Hey, Bill?
Sure.
Just a comment regarding your training regimen.
Sure.
I haven't seen anything, that's what I did all through school.
Did you?
Yeah, I was, until I discovered racquetball, I wasn't good at any of the other court sports. Swimming was it, but graduated from Hoyokai, in fact, I'm coming up on my 50th in the union. Point is, our pool was identical to Mount Ave's pool with one notable difference. Our pool had two underwater windows, one in the shallow end, all on the same level.
Right.
One shallow, one deep.
Yep.
And the school was wired with a closed circuit television system. I, I watched for, and we used that. The coach used to, here's your flip turn in the shallow end, here's what you look like in your stroke looks like underwater.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any, any mention of that in the papers. I kind of follow the, have you guys thought about using?
All the time. Oh, well, yeah, all the time. So I don't want to cut you off. Are you done with the question?
Well, my question was, had you considered, given the relatively low expense of GoPro underwater cameras and video monitors?
I'm glad you asked. And I won't take up too much of your time because I know you have a busy agenda tonight. There's a tech, there's a, and I won't do a commercial for this company, but there is a company that offers an app where I'm able to, and any of the coaches can do this, we can take images either above water or below with a GoPro camera and slow it down, draw on it, and say, this is the angle your hand needs to be at. We can teach these kids the infinitely detailed nuances of swimming.
Are you doing that right now?
Yes, this is the first year.
No.
Yep.
It works so well.
It does. So much of the stroke is underwater.
In our school, of course, coaching, without the coaching, you can have all the greatest tools and still be a failure.
True.
But when we implemented that, we moved into our new school in 1965. We were the first athletic team to use the athletic wing. Of course, the swim team was very proud of their brand-new pool.
Right.
That year, we took the Western Mass League, we took the Massachusetts League by the highest margin ever and third in New England.
Well, it sounds like we should talk because we're building a new coaching strategy over the winter. We're always trying to revise that and I'd love to hear more about that because.
Well, seeing what you're doing in the pool only gives you the top half. You gotta see what's below because that's where virtually all the propulsion takes place.
Yeah.
And you're doing it.
I'm nodding my head enthusiastically. Jen Kingsley behind you, we have the same strategy for that sort of stuff. She's in charge of our swim racing program, which is another area we'd like to see more people join. And that, it's, a lot of it's underwater and you can't see that if you're just standing on the deck. Yep.
Good for you.
Very good point. Thank you.
Bravo.
Any other questions? Again, thank you, Bill, for everything.
Thank you a lot. And I'm sorry to go, I have to go coach a still fun but inferior sport.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you very much.
We'll be in touch.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay. Next, we're gonna turn the meeting over to Chief Merkel, Virgin's Police Department. For those that weren't here at the last meeting, there was some discussion had that, we won't get into the discussion, but it raised some questions and I felt the need to bring Chief in tonight to let the citizens know some of the stuff that was, that's going on within the police department to eliminate some questions. Chief, it's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we start, I'm going to, and I'll talk about the latest. This is one that I, this is even later than that. And I'll explain why we have this. Mel, I'm gonna give you my copy and if I need to refer to it, I'll come to you. This is the fair and impartial policing policy that is, was provisioned on 29th of June 2016. So if I may, for those of you that don't know me, I'm sure most of you do, I'm Chief Merkel and I've been with the Virgin's Police Department since November of 2009. And prior to that, I was with Middlebury for 12 years. But one of the things that I, I made a decision when I came to Virgin's, the chief of police, is that the things that were taught to me when I first went through my, well, actually, going way back to my mom and dad who were raising me, they taught me to respect everybody, treat everybody with respect and courtesy, regardless of whether they have a difference of opinion, different outlook on life, different beliefs, to treat people with respect. And that's been reinforced on me quite significantly. I had a very strong mom and dad and if I ventured from that straight line, which I didn't very often, I usually paid with fair amounts of hard labor. But it stuck with me and I found that when I was a police officer in Middlebury, you get the respect that you give people. When you treat people with courtesy and respect, you'll get the same in return, regardless of what the situation may be. I never had any place in my heart or in my profession for people that didn't subscribe to that. So when I came to Virgin's, I made sure that that was one of the cornerstones of my leadership and things that I passed on to my police officers. And I was very lucky that when I got here, I had police officers that subscribed to that very concept. This has been reinforced over the years and since I was a, been a police officer, I went to the academy in 1998, graduated in 1998. I've been an instructor for core values and leadership at the academy. As I figure out now, it's probably about 17 years I've been teaching that. And again, when I have young police officers that are coming to the academy, I teach them rightly to be policing, to treat people with respect and courtesy and to be tolerant. And one of the things that's really come to the forefront over the years is bias-free policing. And whether people realize it or not, one of the things that we're taught is, everybody has biases, whether you realize it or not, depending on how you grew up, where you came from, all these things, we don't realize we even have a bias, but for police officers in particular, we have to, we have to try to be as free from, removed from any biases that we have. So this is taught at the academy, this is taught at Vermont Police Academy and it's been more, has had more and more reinforcement over the years. So consequently, the Vermont Police Academy and the Vermont Legislature has mandated that we have a bias-free policing policy. I handed a previous policy out, I think it was started in 2014 and then 2016 for revision and then of course in 2016, it was revised and now again, it's being revised by the Attorney General's Office of Criminal Justice Training Council, which is basically the Vermont Police Academy. And what they're going to do is separate the fair and impartial policing now is what it's called. It used to be bias-free, now it's fair and impartial, from any involvement with federal law enforcement agencies, dealing specifically with immigration status. So if you don't think it's gotten a lot of emphasis, it has. This is hammering home into these kids when they come out of the academy, when they go to the academy, when they get out of the academy, and every year, it's becoming more and more prevalent. So as I, I did a little research on the website and I found that police officers going through the full-time basic course of instruction, which now is 18 weeks long, they get a total of 24 hours of training that's specific to this concept. Four hours of fair and impartial policing policy, which includes cultural diversity. Eight hours of ethics and law enforcement, four hours on hate crime and four hours of community policing. This does not include my four hours of core values and leadership. So we've got basically 28 hours of training. After a police officer goes through their initial block of instruction at the police academy, then we also have their field training officer time here in Virgin's and then consequently a year's probation afterwards. So we're evaluating people, but even before somebody goes to the academy, from the day they walk in the door to Virgin's Police Department, I'm a pretty straightforward guy and I make it clear to people that if you're gonna be wearing the uniform of Virgin's police officer, you're gonna treat people with respect and courtesy and you're gonna understand that. And I, there's no tolerance for any type of unprofessionalism or misbehavior. So what do we do as a department? What do I do as a leader to make sure that that stays in place, those concepts stay locked in the brain housing group? And that is, we have in-car videos, which is a receiver here. This is a recording video, a recorder. This records any conversations me and my officers have roadside. So when an officer turns his or her blue lights on and approaches a car, it's recording the traffic stop and it's recording the conversation. Likewise, I don't even have to turn my blue lights on, I can just activate this recorder and I can record most of the time up to about 1,000 feet away and record a conversation I'm having with somebody. Now, because of the law, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we're not, we alert people if we're recording them within the residence, but nevertheless, any encounters are recorded on this device. That enables me to review those encounters with the public. I get to see how my officers treat somebody at a roadside stop or if somebody is encountering somebody on the street and we review those encounters and we critique that with police officers to make sure that they're doing the right thing. I don't have any room, I don't have any tolerance for people who use foul language or act inappropriately. Not only does it discredit my department, it discredits the Virgin's, the city of Virgin's and my profession, something I take very seriously. And anybody that knows me knows that I will not tolerate that and I'm very proud of the fact that I work for the city of Virgin's and the Virgin's Police Department. If a complaint comes in about a police officer, supposedly somebody treated inappropriately, brusely or whatever the case may be, whether a call comes in to the city manager, the mayor, the city council member or myself, I'm the one that reviews that. I will pull that tape and review that roadside stop by myself, not with the officer. And then if there's corrective action that needs to be made, I make it. If there's no corrective action and I find out it's unwarranted, I respond to the person who makes the complaint. So that's basically the checks and balances that we have. We check these on a periodic basis. If there's a consent search done, and basically for those of you who don't know what that is, if I stop a car and I feel as though there's contraband in the car, if I smell the odor of marijuana or I detect drugs or whatever the case may be, we ask if consent to search the car. And then the person can either give us consent to search the vehicle or we, if we feel as though we have an improper cause, we'll get a search warrant. Every consent search that takes place, we review that as supervisors. We want to know what the nature of the call, the stop was, why the contact was made, the encounter between the operator of the vehicle and the officer and what the outcome is because it's important to us from an officer's safety standpoint and to make sure they're doing what is correct. The other thing we like to do too is, not every traffic stop is a pleasurable encounter. Sometimes people get a little irate because of the fact, some people just don't like being stopped by the police. I particularly don't like being stopped by police either, but you know something? I'm probably a little bit more tolerant because I am a police officer. I'm not as threatening, but I've been told that sometimes I have a, with my military background, my short hair, I'm kind of a big ugly guy, some people may not feel as comfortable talking to me on the side of the road. I know, I'm surprised, surprised. But the fact of the matter is that we critique our officers and make sure that they're polite and courteous and they're following the proper procedure. So with that in mind, we developed a fair and impartial policing based on the guidance we got from the Criminal Justice Training Council. Again, a new policy was gonna be coming out, a draft policy will be coming out in October. One of the reasons I'm here is because of a report that was put together by Stephanie Seguino, who's a professor from UVM. And basically Professor Seguino took the roadside racial data that is made, so basically if I stop a car, I stop only for some reason.
I speak French.
You got a warning. But if I stop only, I have to record that. I have to record the nature of the stop, so everything from A to Z. And basically what's recorded is the reason for the stop, the number of people in the vehicle, the gender of the operator, racial origin, gender of the passengers, the approximate age of all involved, if there was a search involved and the outcome of the search, the outcome of the stop, whether it be a traffic stop, a ticket or a warning. So that's basically the information that has, has to be recorded, whether a ticket is issued or a warning is issued. There's no such thing anymore as a verbal warning. Professor Seguino, this report came out in 2015, it was a self-motivated initiative, nobody asked her to do it from what I can understand. Report's never been peer reviewed, does not account for multiple tickets issued for one traffic stop. So basically, all the information she has is she's correlating a ticket for a stop. Well, you may have multiple tickets for one stop, so there's, there's a flaw in the, in the process in itself. From what I understand, Professor Seguino is not a statistician, she's an economist, and her report has some problems as far as the sample size. The sample size just isn't, according to statisticians, isn't large enough to really come out to a conclusive point. An independent group known as CRG, Crime Research Group, has conducted its own study to determine the validity of her report. And you all remember when it came out back in March of this year, myself and Chief Frank Koss from the Heinsberg Police Department took issue with the report because we felt as though it was inaccurate. It painted a bad light not only on the Virgin's Police Department, but on the city of Virgin's and law enforcement as a whole. So we had a gentleman, Frank Koss, has a gentleman who works for him as a statistician. He put together his own interpretation of this and it clearly pointed out the drawbacks or the shortcomings of the report. So we called Professor Seguino to discuss the issue and she's never returned our call. I'm not gonna get into the fine point, finer points of the statistics unless somebody wants me to. But basically, I have a problem with anybody putting out a piece of, a document that paints a bad picture of a municipality or a profession without having some kind of review done. I took it personally. Anytime somebody has something to say about the Virgin's, the city of Virgin's or the Virgin's Police Department in bad light, if I feel it's unwarranted, I'm going to, I'm going to argue that point. It reflects upon each and every one of you that sits here in front of me tonight and I don't take that lightly. I wasn't confrontational, but I thought it was warranting having a discussion to talk about the process and I wasn't even given the courtesy of a returned phone call. So based on Professor Seguino's report, it was based on the resident black population of Addison County. She took the total number of car stops and then she accounted for both and she lumped that in with all of the car stops. So basically, she's using a reference point of the census for Addison County for black population. What she did do, she took all the tickets that were issued, all the car stops were made and something like 80% of those car stops were not of Addison County. made, and something like eighty percent of those car stops were not of Addison County black population. We've got a problem there. It's, it's skewing the numbers terribly, and we tried to point that out, and it didn't, we just couldn't do that. We couldn't, we couldn't refute that with it because she didn't give us the opportunity. I wanna, I wanna reassure everybody here that every officer that I've got working for me right now takes their job very seriously. The city of Vergennes has spent a lot of money on the police department. They spend a lot of money and time training us and equipping us, and there isn't an officer that I have working for me right now I don't feel very comfortable with. I have complete trust in their honesty and their integrity, their heart, and unless somebody can point out to me that there is a problem with their behavior, I will stand behind them. I'll stand behind them anyhow, and I'll correct them if there's a correction that needs to be made. But we're well aware of what's going on around the country. We're well aware of the current atmosphere, the fear some people have with changes in, in our government, and unfortunately, that has an adverse impact even here in Vergennes and in the state of Vermont. But I can reassure you that everybody is treated properly, and I will not condone or put up with any type of misbehavior along that line. And I stand with that. And the other thing I will tell you is, regardless of the fact that I'm the chief of police or a police officer, I'm a very approachable person. I welcome the opportunity to have conversations with anybody that has any concerns or, or fears about the way things are being done. We're an open book. Law enforcement is probably one of the most, at least people that I deal with here in the state of Vermont, is one of the most transparent professions in the United States right now. We have to be. We all see what's going on, and we don't like what is happening in our country, especially in law enforcement. There's a lot of good people that, that wear our uniform. We have the same issues everybody else does. We have our own challenges in our own personal life, and the guys and gals that wear my uniform, wear your uniform. Respect that. So what steps am I gonna take to further reassure people? Well, one of the things I've talked about with Matt, I've talked with Jeff Fritz, I've talked with a number of people, I've talked to the city manager. I think once or twice a year, we're gonna have an open forum to welcome people to come in and have a conversation. Bring any concerns that they may not feel comfortable sharing with me at the office to an open forum, maybe at the Opera House, you know, if we can get that venue, to discuss any issues. I encourage police officers to be involved in our community. I mean, we're, we've been involved with the Boys and Girls Club, we do public speaking engagements, talking about bullying and hate crimes and, and domestic violence at all the local schools, not just Vergennes, but in Ferrisburg and Addison, the Christian I had the good fortune of being asked to be a football coach this year to work with our young men that play on the combined Mount A Vergennes football team. If you see me get out of my chair, I, that's a little bit of a reminder to myself that I'm not eighteen years old and I can't run around on the field like I used to, but nevertheless, it's a great opportunity for me to work with young men and reinforce those core values that I speak about at the police academy. What I'm gonna do right now, I'm gonna pause for a second. Does anybody have any questions about what I put out tonight? Go ahead.
Chief, I guess a couple of questions. First question was, I missed the meeting that was apparently a month ago, that apparently prompted this call for a public policy statement issued by Vergennes. And what exactly transpired in that meeting that escalated to a request for a public statement from the city, a position statement that says, "We, the city of Vergennes, will be or will not be," what exactly happened in that meeting? Or is...
I'm gonna defer that to the city council when I'm not there.
All right, okay, I wasn't sure.
I'll, I'll start and then while it's gonna be out, something else. That it was in part of that discussion. A email came from a citizen and a member of one of the local boards, planning commission, whatever, doesn't matter, suggesting, recommending that we move forward with a resolution against hate, bigotry, the like. And a council member then sent me an email. I, in, at that time, was a little bit slow on returning an email back to that person 'cause I wanted to find out the need, and so I was talking it over with the city manager, and the city manager says, "You don't have to do anything." I got a second email from another council person. At that point, the level is starting to get there and said, "Okay, maybe, maybe we should put something out." And at some point, some other events went on as far as discussion, but we were trying to be extremely careful not to violate any open meeting laws. A copy of a resolution came to me, call it what you want, watered it down, slimmed it out, took out some of the, I didn't feel that putting in an event added any real value to a statement of, or naming a particular club neo-Nazi. I didn't think, I think the, the base of my thought, of which I helped write the document, and other ones said that they could live with the document once I finished my version. So that was then sent out in a council packet, of which hopefully they get it, they get it on a Friday night about five o'clock, not saying when, they have to read it, they're to pack it, but they were given the opportunity to, to view it. We felt that, I felt that it was best to move forward with something that was talking about really the meat and the potato of what they were looking for. And that to me was hate, discontent, bigotry, love who you want, how you want, practice any religion you want, the, the basics of, you know, freedom, freedom of speech. Some people just, here's, here, that's where I was leading, that's, that's where I was heading. And so, and that was presented to council. We, I made a slip in that the word "draft" did not appear on the council's copy. It, it should've stayed on the, the watermark should've stayed on it when it went out in the packet. That was a mistake on, on my part when I approved it. I'll, I'll own that one. So, and there was some verbiage in there that was questionable, and I, I need to talk to one of the council persons after this meeting about that verbiage for some clarification. And so it, it was passed, and I don't know if everybody really had the full backing or not, but it, by vote, it did pass.
Was the form still basically in draft form when it was passed? Further study...
We, we removed some verbiage. If, if you want, rather than going on, I don't have a copy of that, that resolution with me. We will get you a copy. Either you can stop by City Hall...
Sure.
And pick up a copy if, if you'd like. If somebody else needs one, you know, please contact City Hall. And, and it was offered to them by the council. If someone did not feel that, that was adequate, then they had the opportunity to present another resolutions with different verbiage and the means to which it could be either voted on, gone in front of the voters, whatever. So there was, that opportunity is there and it still exists.
The "then" you're referring to would be the...
The people that attended that meeting.
And brought up this issue and voiced a concern.
Sorry you missed the meeting, Bob.
Well, we're in the middle of a torrential downpour, so we figured if we make progress, we're gonna stay there.
Understood. Does anybody else on the council have anything else to add to that sequence of events that I might be off on? Please let it out now. Speak or...
I'm sorry I wasn't here for a meeting two weeks ago. I like to be nice enough to say council members, I was the one that drafted it, the, the draft resolution. I got emails, not only that were sent to the council, but I got in communication with some other council or community, community members. Soon after Charlottesville, there was a lot of concern and what can we do just to sort of say something? The resolution really doesn't have any teeth. It basically just says, "What you learned in kindergarten is still true today. Be nice to other people."
That's kinda where I was going with my question. Do we know enough from the, from the cradle?
It's always nice to be reminded, though. That was my thought was, there's, there's no law that we're gonna pass saying we're gonna do something. Chief Merkel can arrest people for being mean. It just, that goes against free speech. But it's also nice to just remember, it's good. I mean, if, if you didn't have that kind of reminder going on, then there wouldn't be any reason to have a Sunday sermon. You're being told things that you really should already know by the person up on the pulpit there.
And there are people out there that haven't grasped that concept, instead of reinforcing it almost. Unfortunately, when they take adverse action on that failure to learn, that's when we get called, and we, we do get called. And unfortunately, I mean, what some people don't realize is that the way we act is the way our kids, the kids are going to mimic what we do and what we don't do. And if they hear hateful rhetoric, then they're going, "Fuck all that." And of course, then we see some of the tragedies that we deal with in the schools with bullying and sometimes worse. And we take every opportunity to reinforce those concepts when we go to the schools for public speaking engagements. We take every opportunity, if something comes about in the national or local news about things, and we talk about that on a regular basis. We're a fairly well-engaged department because we are a small department, and we also realize that, you know, all of us are proud of Vergennes, are proud of where Vergennes has, has come, and wanna see it get better in the future. And, you know, the, the vibrancy of our community is based on how comfortable people feel coming to visit here, where they feel like they're gonna be treated fairly, and, and people treat them with respect. Whether, whether we understand it or not, there are some people with honest fears about the way things are going. And from my frame of reference, and I look at things differently than maybe Jason does or maybe Mel does, we're all different, but we have to make sure that everybody is treated fairly. And of course, if they, if they take, like I say, adverse action, that's when we become involved. But even those people that we deal with, regardless of what they do, we still treat people with respect and courtesy.
Chief, if I may, one other item that I hesitated to mention that I wanna bring out is Representative Lampier was here and presented a document that the state had put together, I believe last November, don't quote me on the date, but I think it was that timeframe, about a similar resolution or document. I don't know if Warren is, can remember that document or not, but it, it, there was some additional verbiage in there about the president. At that time, they were, they, the representatives had issues, and don't let me put words in your mouth, Warren, speak up please, about some of the things that the president was doing at that time, and they felt at need to address verbiage. And I'm gonna turn it over to Monique, 'cause I know she has something that she wants to ask or say.
Do you wanna say it again?
Well, I, I think any resolution comes out on the floor in January or so, so I think I do recall some resolution in general of that effect coming up in January. I wasn't aware of anything in November.
Mayor, can I say something? If we can get just, Monique, real quick, and then we're gonna go right back to you, Charlie.
Actually, thank you, Michael. The question I have is for you, chief. I think this seemed pretty serious. We talk about a professor, so we talk about equality university material as a study, and I am a little stuck on both aspects of the study, A, the methodology, and B, the statistical significance, which you somehow were concerned as well. I seem to understand that you, you called her, and she didn't respond to you.
Correct.
So are we living a situation whereby we're having a study that we could see has not, whose statistical proof has not been proven enough because of the small specimen, nor the methodology, which you mentioned in the first part of your, of your discussion? And would, would I be interested to try to pursue this aspect as to validate this study?
Law enforcement takes those, no matter what department it's from, no matter what municipality, that is important to us, especially in today's day and age. So when a report like that comes out and is released to the public...
Right.
That report should be vetted. It should be vetted, and if there's any, for instance, if I put a report out with sometimes statistical data for the city of Vergennes, I better make sure that report is correct.
Absolutely.
And if somebody calls me up and says, "Chief, your numbers are flawed," or "Your methodology is flawed," I have no business re, releasing that report, 'cause it doesn't only just come out as a report. Look at how it's adversely affected the city of Vergennes. That's, that's, that's poor. That's a poor decision. So at, at very least, Professor Seguino should've called us back and said, "Let's have a conversation about this," and that wasn't, that wasn't done. So that's where I, I take issue with this. And like I say, if it brings bad light on the city of Vergennes or the Vergennes Police Department, I'm gonna take issue with that. I, I have a responsibility to do that. And getting back to the political climate, one of the things that I adhered to when I was a soldier and the same thing as police, as a police officer, regardless of what the political climate is, I'm gonna do what's right. I'm always gonna do what's right. What the law requires me to do, and I'm gonna do what's right. It's not based on anything else. I don't, I don't care who the president is, if, if, and I'm not saying that disrespectfully, I'm just saying that I will always do as the law requires me to do, and that's it. And I treat everybody with respect and courtesy, and so do my men and women, and I will not tolerate anything else beyond that. And I do have, I do take steps to ensure that they follow those procedures, the way it's spelled out by the law, federal department, and the city of Vergennes. Mel Hawley and I have had conversations since I became a chief of police here in the city of Vergennes, and we talk about, we talk about customer service. I'm in, I'm in a service business, I'm in a customer service business, and I have to make sure that regardless of what kind of encounter I have with people, they have, even if they don't like the outcome of the encounter, they can look at it and say, "Well, that Vergennes police officer treated us with respect and courtesy," and that's what we're all about. And if anybody, anybody has any questions about the way we do business, why we do business the way we do, I encourage you to please contact me. My cell phone is always on, twenty-four seven. If it's after ten o'clock at night, I'd like to have you ask, wait till the following morning, but if they can't, give me a call. But don't ever hesitate to contact me or any of my officers and ask for help or for guidance. Anybody from the city council have any questions for me as far as my, what I put out today, why we do what we do, or how we do it?
I have a question, and this is not intended to put you on the spot, but the policy, the fair and impartial policing policy?
Yes.
I know you have it in the policy that it's for internal use, but I was wondering if that really could be released, because I think people should read it. It is very, very, very comprehensive. I mean, there were things in that policy that I never even thought of, having a policy on it.
I can't tell you, I don't, I can't tell you how many hours. I, I was president of Vermont Chiefs Association for a year, and I've been the president of Vermont Police Association for two years. And being the president of either association, we are directly involved... And being the president of either association, we are directly involved in all law enforcement matters in the state of Vermont. Fair and impartial policing has been one of those hot buttons that has been in the forefront of our discussions for years. And long before it was required, we had a fair and impartial policing. At the time, it was called biased policing. I didn't like the name of it. I called it fair and impartial. Because regardless of who you are or what you are or what your background is, I require my officers to treat people with fairness and impartiality. So I've been part of these discussions. I've been part of these discussions with migrant farm workers groups, with chiefs of police, with the attorney general's office. And whereas I may not have been the direct author, I was directly involved in these discussions with other chiefs. And we've spent hundreds of hours discussing this. So when you look at that policy, I'd like to claim the craftsmanship in that policy, but it's a combination of all of us in the state. And that'll tell you a little bit about the quality of our profession in our state. We take that very seriously, put a lot of time into it, and it's being revised again now to deal specifically with how law enforcement agencies interact with federal law enforcement agencies.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that you added?
In our conversation yesterday, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, that this is actually a working in progress document. It's a good start, but they're looking at the document constantly to see with the different situations that occur, does it need to be made better? So.
This policy is about as good as you're going to find it. The only thing they're going to do is they're going to separate the immigration pieces in it from the fair and impartial. So they're going to be two separate documents. That's it. Now, there may be other changes, but the legislature required us to have the changes made a draft copy by October of 2017. And that, in fact, will be in place. That'll be in place. But again, that's our fair and impartial policing. I think I've explained what we do to make sure that people are treated fairly and impartially. I've explained the philosophy of my leadership in the department, and that will never change.
Does anybody else on the council feel that it's necessary to put this out where others people can see it? I'm kind of curious as to where we want to direct this, and that conversation needs to be had with Mel and Chief.
I don't regard this as being an, you're thinking this is an internal?
Well, only because at the beginning of the policy, it says it's for internal use, but the...
It's now public record.
Yeah, it's now public record, that's right.
I have some problems. Look, you can go on the criminal justice council website and find that, save Virgens Police Department has been vetted.
And I just think that, you know, people should see it and also know that this policy has been in existence for many years before some of these issues came up.
We had a policy in 2014, long before the retirement by the state. And we had one prior to that, it was just a different name. And this is a work in progress. It's evolved, you know, because of events throughout the United States. That's why this focus has been on this. And I'll tell you, this has been one of the hottest issues in law enforcement for the past three, four years.
I'd just like to say that as a lifetime Virgens person around Virgens, I think we have the best police department that we've ever had, and I trust you 100%. And I hope that the citizens out there will support the department and understand that somebody from another community who doesn't know anything about us made a, I will say, a biased situation out of what is totally untrue. So with that, I would say you have my support, and I'm sure you have the council's support in full. And there couldn't, we couldn't have a better department than we have right now.
Andy, did you have something?
Yeah, I did, George. I know you didn't want to get statistics, and I know we've talked about this a little bit. But I didn't quite follow the 80% statistic you gave. And it may have confused some of the other people.
The basis for the discussion is she made her report, she based her report on how many people of color, black residents, live in Addison County. So when you do an analysis like that, basically you have to refer to the number of operators who happen to be black that live in Addison County. That make sense to everybody? It's basically comparing one to the other.
Otherwise, the data is completely skewed.
But if you take the numbers of people, the number of cars that were stopped, the number of black operators that were stopped during this report period. And then you interject not numbers that don't reflect just Addison County people of color, but all people of color that we stopped during that period of time, you're skewing the numbers.
Absolutely.
You're terribly skewing the numbers. I'm not a statistician. I am not. I'm a police officer. But there are people that are statisticians that pointed that out, and the people from crime research group who do this for a living brought that point up. And again, I'm not, look, I will never defend, and I remember there was a comment made about being ensconced. Let me explain something to you. I can be brutally honest with my own community as well as I can with anybody else. And when somebody makes a reference and I can't be objective, I have an obligation as a chief, as a police officer, to be, to call the attention to something that's wrong within my own profession. And I have done that. And I've done that proudly, and I will continue to do that until I hang up my uniform. That's the way I do business, and I do the same thing with my police officers if they make a mistake. I will argue to the ends of the earth, and I will defend what's right, and I will critique and correct what's wrong. But one thing I have no tolerance for is people being treated improperly. And I also have no tolerance for people who make accusations that is unfounded. And if somebody said, Chief, your information is incorrect, I would welcome the opportunity to sit down and discuss that with them. And then I would eat my words if I was wrong. I take my profession very seriously, and you have to in today's day and age. It's not easy being a police officer in 2017. Never did I believe that our country and our profession would be under the gun the way it is right now. And it saddens me. This is not what Vermont's all about. That's not what America's all about.
So, George?
Chief?
Sir? One of the, this is what I'm getting from what you were saying about the numbers. So the total number of stops, you get a lot of transients going through Vermont.
Correct.
And you're saying that number got added into the total numbers, so kind of skewed it?
She did not compare the number of operators that were stopped to Addison County numbers. What she did is she took the total numbers, which I believe they were 118, and of the 118, 80% of those were not from Addison County. See what I'm saying? Does everybody understand that? Please explain, please put your hand up and tell me.
That's why when I read that, I kept waiting to read a rebuttal. Because Echo 101 could have debunked that report that that woman, that professor so-called, put up. She should have had the conversation with you before she put it out, not after.
And I agree with that, but you know what's more important to me is, again, I go back to what picture does that paint for my community?
Yeah.
And what picture does that paint for my police department? And that's why I take issue with it. I'm not going to get into the figures. The figures are there. Anybody can take a look at it and figure it out themselves, and people have done that. But what does it do to the reputation of my department? What does it do to the reputation of my city?
Forces us to defend ourselves against something that is a false allegation.
Well, except that's why I took issue with it. But more importantly, you put the study aside. What do I do to make sure that what is being inferred in this does not take place in the city of Virgens? And that's what I'm concerned about. That's the issue. And that's why we have that policy. That's why we have the training that we do. People get it at the academy, they get it at our home station. Yes, ma'am?
Just if I could explain a little bit more about the statistics, but if only 20% were of Addison citizens, and you probably know this, but I thought I'd bring this out to the crowd, that gives you less than 30 stops that were of Addison County citizens. And statistically, I think the analysis she did, you need at least a sample of 30. So she can't compare the small number of stops in Virgens to the Addison County population. Because the sample that she has is too small, it's less than 30, not even 25.
If you read page three of a report, she does have a disclaimer that explains that the information that she used was incomplete. Like 37% of the accident data where she drew some of her information from was incomplete. And all I'm saying is, look, you know, retract that statement so it does not reflect that way. Or if you feel as though you're correct, have that conversation with me and enlighten me. Okay? Because I'm not so rigid that I can't look at things objectively. I do it every day, and I take pride in what I do. Okay?
And we take pride in you, Chief, and your department.
I just want to get across to you that I'm a very sincere person and I'm very passionate about what I do. I take this, I take this very seriously. Is that true, Chief? My wife said, keep it short, just sit down. Who knows you better than your wife, right? Folks, again, anyone else have any other questions of George before we bring this to a close? Yes, ma'am.
So I grew up here on the town, and my question is, and I was late coming in from work, so maybe you've already like brought this up. So you, and I'm a stats minor, so this is like my wheelhouse here. So my question is, so you're not agreeing with the conclusions because the data set isn't complete and it's too small to be statistically significant? Or to have good confidence in being able to say like, this is not very chance, this is actually, you know, something significant? Has there been any talk of maybe redoing the data and seeing what's up?
And you may have missed that. There is a group called Crime Research Group. They are independent. They're doing the work for us now, not us, they're doing it independently. And they're going to look at the data that was, look, every department in the state is required to provide the data. And then what happens is somebody like Professor Seguinos, Crime Research Group, can request that data from Department of Public Safety, which is the warehouse for this information. And then they will take that and they will put together their methodology on how they interpret that. It wasn't so much that, that part of my rebuttal was not just the fact that the data may have been incomplete, but it was the way you did it, she did it. You have to compare the number of stops that were Addison County people of color versus the census. And that's where you come up with that information. And that's not what she did. She took it for everybody that was stopped of color. And 80% of the people that we stopped of color were not from Addison County. So how can you develop an accurate report with that kind of methodology? And I, believe me, ask Mel. I am not a mathematician. The guy has to check my math all the time. But I know that's incorrect.
So are they reinterpreting the data that she used on that initial study? Or are they using more contemporaneous data?
I think what they're doing, ma'am, and I don't know this, but I would guess they're probably taking maybe her data and other data. Of course, now it's gone from 2014 now to 2017. They're probably going to take additional data and take a look at it, which if they get a better picture, they should look at all three years. And then put it out there. And if there's a problem, then let's get the problem fixed. Maybe something we are missing, and I welcome that. You know, I have no problem with that. Go ahead, sir.
What was the motivation of this particular professor to actually do this? Was it something that was contracted through the state?
No, she was, I spoke with Rick Gauthier, who is the executive director for the Criminal Justice Training Council. He told me that it was self-generated, something she did in her capacity as professor for the University of Vermont. And I don't know what her motive is. I never had the opportunity to ask her. So I can't answer that question. And of course, like I say, if something comes out that's as inflammatory as this, there's been a lot of discussion amongst law enforcement executives on what we can do to really take a look at it and see what the true representation is. But one of the problems is going to be presented to anybody that does any statistical analysis of Virgens is there is a large transient amount of traffic that goes through our city every day. And I'll give you, for instance, this is kind of eye-opening for me. This is based on D-Trans. For the Main Street area in 2015, the daily traffic estimate going through Virgens is 12,700 vehicles a day. The annual calculation is 4,635,500 vehicles a year. The number of traffic stops in 2016 for the Virgens Police Department was 3,130 cars, 3,130 vehicles. So the percentage of vehicles stops versus annual amount of vehicles comes out to 0.0675%. Basically, 1 in 1,500 vehicles, I believe it is. So, I actually sound like I know what I'm talking about here, but that's scary. But that's it, folks. And just something else, when we stop a vehicle, this is law enforcement 101. When we stop a vehicle, I'll ask the question here. Where do you most expect to find a Virgens police officer running radar? West Main Street. Well, you know something? I take issue with anybody calling that a traffic, a speed trap. A speed trap, thank you, Mel. When you've got a black and white cruiser, fully lit up and marked, that's not a speed trap, folks. And anybody, and then, of course, where we set up, we set up well within the speed zone. So you know, speed zones are marked with speed zone signs. We don't sit at the speed zone sign. We don't catch you when you're coming across the 30 mile an hour speed zone sign and get you when you're five feet beyond it. We're usually well within that speed zone. And it doesn't take much to know that we're out there. And when we, when we're running radar, the traffic, the initiation of the traffic stop may be when the vehicle gets closer, but we'll pick you up on radar a long distance away, a long distance away. So we have no idea of, most of the time, the registration, nor the ethnic background of the person driving the car, or the gender of the person driving the car. And that's even more obvious when it comes to nighttime operations. And our tickets to warnings run somewhere around 55% to 45%. And my officers are given the flexibility to make a decision whether to issue the ticket, amend the ticket, reduce the amount, or give a warning. And we like to do that. We like to have that flexibility, and I'm not going to change based on any type of adversity. I always want my officers to have that. And if there's a problem with that, then I fix that problem with my officers. Go ahead.
Hey, I'm reading the, from the report right here, from the discussion conclusions, and I think this helps inform some of, one of the questions that was just asked. The analysis of this racial disparity in traffic policing is one of the first to broadly cover the state of Vermont and was made possible by legislation requiring the collection of race data in traffic stops starting in 2014. We are hopeful that the results will be helpful to law enforcement agencies and public officials to guide efforts to improve the quality of data collection. Most agencies are new to traffic data collection, and some have distance to go to improve the quality of that data. Agencies in particular should work to ensure that data is required, data in all required categories is collected and to address the problem of missing data in both traffic stops and accident reports. And I think that's an important piece in terms of the context of why this was undertaken. I think it's also important to note, as much as others have supported, I express support for the work you do, and I have spoken with you personally, and I appreciate the work you do. I think it's also important to be reminded that we have a right and a responsibility as a public to ask of our elected officials and the people that are paid to serve the community and protect the community, how it is you do the work that you do. I very much appreciate that you've come here today to talk to that. And I, you know, I just, I think it's as virtuous for people to be sitting here in this place here to talk and ask questions of the police force and of the city council. And I wouldn't want that to be lost in the discussion about challenging, you know, challenging the studies that come out as a result of that. Asking, challenging, challenging how we do the work we do is how we do what we do better. And I think that that's an important thing to remember as a community, and that we have a right to do that. And I appreciate that you've been open enough to allow people to challenge that, because I think that that's a very important American virtue as well.
I agree with Jason 100%. And you know something? You are taxpayers. You pay a lot of money for your police department, and you have a right to know why we do what we do and how we do it. And if there's a question, I have a responsibility to respond to that. And if there's a problem, I have a responsibility to fix that problem. But my goal is to always protect the city of Virgens and the people who live here, the people that come here and visit. And likewise, if there's discredit being brought upon my city because of what I think is erroneous information, I have an obligation to stand up and speak my piece. That's my right as a citizen, not only as a chief of police or a... That's my right as a citizen, not only as a chief of police or a police officer. And I'm going to do that, especially when it brings discredit upon my city and my department.
Just one last question. Pardon me. So, is it apparent in the document that the university put its stamp of approval? It's a totally independent thing?
I don't know, I really don't know the complete involvement of the university. Obviously, she has a moniker of being a UVM professor. The roadside racial requirement to record roadside racial data is something that was generated by the legislature. But who mandated her to make that report or conduct that study which resulted in the report? I don't have the answer. I was under the impression that it was something that she did under her, under her position as a position of a professor. So, I don't have any other answer to that. But again, there are people out there that feel as though it's flawed, and these people do this for a living. Any other questions? Anybody from the city council? Okay? And that is a public document. If anybody wishes to see it, I mean, it's there. So, thank you for the time, folks. And please, if you ever have any questions, just come see me. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Last motion for the approval of the minutes. August twenty seventh, twenty seventeen. Full made the motion, ready, seconded in. Discussion, corrections, admissions, errors? Any? None? 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 Get a start for that one. Joan and Mel. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Boy, record. Okay. Any questions on the warrants? Hearing none?
There is, just so you know, there's the, if you, if your, what went out in your packet was a hundred and two thousand dollars in warrants and what you signed was just under a million. And that's, that's not normally my style, but there is a seven hundred and seven thousand dollar check there that's going to the Addison Northwest School District. So.
Well, we don't want them to strike.
They're not going to strike now.
Yeah, that's good. Excellent. Great job, Mark. Thank you. That's not an easy job. All right. Next item is item number four, citizens' comments. And these are items not otherwise on the agenda. And just so that you know, the only thing that we have left is the city manager's report. He's going to talk about the fund balance report, the swimming pool budget, FY twenty eighteen budget report. He has some other topics that aren't listed, items that I'm going to talk briefly about. Swimming pool advisory report, of which it's in the packet, train station visit, V L T C, municipality, excuse me, assistant senators frequent, yeah, frequent ask questions and executive sessions about having to do with open meeting laws. And then we'll photo finish with somebody asking to adjourn. But before we get to that, any comments from the community, citizens in the, you're on?
I have a question or more, yeah, actually, comment is good. I really am curious, from time to time, you've changed the time of the start of this meeting. When I first moved to town, it was a seven o'clock meeting. You've moved to six o'clock a few years ago, and it's been since moved to five thirty. Just a point, I left my place of employment today at four fifteen, hoping to get here on time. And as you saw, I didn't get here on time. Traffic on Route Seven is making that pretty difficult these days. I know that's not perpetual, hopefully. But I don't, I'm curious as to how that discussion happens within the board, whether or not that's ever re, you know, if that's brought back up, like how that time is talked about as the board and what sort of input you get from the community? Because for people that don't work within the community, a five thirty start time is a challenge to attend meetings. And I've had conversations with a number of people who have expressed that same feeling.
Jason, thank you for that question and comment. I don't know if somebody in the council wants to try to address that. That was an item that the council voted on at some point in the previous mayors. And so, it was something that was agreed upon and they voted on it and they set the time.
I can take a shot at part of it. It was, it's only been six o'clock since I got on, so I've missed the seven o'clock. And then, a year and a half ago, two years ago, there was a motion by council to move it to five thirty because people getting off work were on the council to go home for ten minutes, turn around and come back here. And in all honesty, most of the time, those chairs are empty. So, we don't have public here. Regardless of what time we're doing, six o'clock, there was rarely anybody that was in the audience. And on occasion, when we know it's going to be a hot topic, we do try and move it to six so that people can be here. Or if we know that there's going to be a topic that we can push up on the agenda so that there's a six o'clock or a six fifteen start, that has been done in a number of meetings. And I think that.
Do you recall if there was a public process to ask the community what time would work?
I think that the idea was that if the community was saying, we really need to be here, we would revisit it.
Yeah.
And I think in the year and a half, two years since we changed the time, there have been maybe three meetings where there have been more than two people in the audience. It's just, and if, I mean, if the community really wants it, I don't think there's anybody here that would object to changing it. But speaking to an empty auditorium, except for TV cameras, and the TV cameras don't care what time we've started. So, if, I think if there is an outcry by the community that people want to be here and want to be engaged and listen to what's going on, I'd much rather talk to an audience and start at seven o'clock than have either people upset or be talking at seven o'clock to an empty audience.
And the other situation that we might offer, if we try to advertise front porch forum and we do post it legally in the proper places, that if somebody wants to talk about an issue or has a question, that they're unable to make it to the meeting on time, they could submit it formally, informally, in an email to Mel or myself or any one of the council members, and they would just need, we would like it, I would like it, in time so that it could go into the packet so that everybody is in tune that there's a question coming that we wouldn't discuss openly. We would just have the opportunity to think about it and then it would, when it came to the meeting, you know, we could, we can waylate. Now, if it is a person such as yourself, and Cheryl said she can't be here till six, so we try to plug that person in at a time in the agenda when they can make it. So, that's the other side of it.
I'll just, I mean, thank you very much. I appreciate your response. Thank you. I've been a member of a board in town here for over a decade on two different boards. And I, we've had that meeting at seven o'clock. And while I don't suspect that the attendance at those meetings would make a difference maybe to the community, I mean, I'm not sure we'd have more people showing up at our DRB or planning commission meetings where we'd hold them at five thirty or seven. There is something that I've seen that about, you know, I think, I don't know of a lot of communities that hold their city council meetings at five thirty in the afternoon. I'm not sure that that means that there isn't, you know, an appropriate reason to do so. I just, I have, I know the buses have a hard time. The buses don't come into town. So, people who use public transportation, that's a big one, are not able to get here for meetings that start at six thirty. To me, that's a, you know, a couple of people I know, that's a challenge. And that's just, I'm just curious about what the process was about changing that, whether, you know, that happens just arbitrarily upon request or, so I've got my answer. I appreciate it. Thanks.
And thank you for those comments. And thank you for coming to this meeting. Okay. No other citizens' comments? Then we're going to move right to city manager's report. Mel?
So, first off, the one-page FY two thousand seventeen report for general fund, fire fund and sewer fund, I'm going to tell you that this is the last time that you're going to see this report because the numbers have basically frozen. And I will mention to you that the audit, our professional audit by Father Gil Segali starts on Thursday. So, I don't know when you will see the final report. I will tell you that the hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar pre-audit fund balance, I do suspect that it will change a little bit only because of the Maple Street culvert project. And I won't bore you with all the details, but because that project was, I will bore you with the details. When we get a paving grant, it's real simple. It's an eighty percent grant, and so you spend a hundred thousand dollars and you get eighty thousand dollars back. It's real simple. A project like the Maple Street Structures project, which involve multiple contractors and our public works crew, and the hours of our public works crew and the hours of our trucks are all eligible expenses under this grant. And we have to compile all of those expenses. And so, what we've been doing is all of the bills associated with that project have been paid one hundred percent out of the grant. And that when, and none of the public works labor and trucking times and gasoline and any of their equipment use has not been charged to the grant. And so, those costs, if you will, have to be merged, added up, and we will get eighty percent. I really think that it, that it will work out that roughly twenty percent of the project has been already absorbed by the public works department. And I just need to prove that and provide documentation. And that will make that number not move. But that's the only thing that we have in the works that is still a moving target. We actually aren't done that project yet. There's still a little bit of shrub planting and the like that needs to be done. There's a little bit of fence that needs to be rebuilt. So, that's a project that crossed fiscal years, which makes it a little bit complicated. So, but anyway, all the rest of the numbers are good. So, that's that one. The swimming pool budget, I may have given that in the wrong order, right? Sorry. So, Jen Kingsley left, and, but she's certainly heard me say this before. This was Jen Kingsley's first year as the director of the pool. She's worked at the pool forever as the lessons director. And this year, she took on both the combined role of the pool director and the lesson director. And off we went. And also this year, as you all know, the wastewater treatment operators were responsible for all facets of water quality. And so, to some degree, their hours are obviously charged to the sewer department, and there's no bill back to the pool. So, there are certainly hidden hours, if you will, from the sewer department. But as you can see, the number Michelle and Lisa is actually even better than what I talked about at the advisory meeting, that as of today, the fund balance is fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Now, some of that money, if you're wondering what the highlights are, that's because up on the revenue side, the three thousand thirty-six dollars is a calculated number. And I don't know if Joan, if you've collected the money from.
Oh, I did. It went in number daily.
Well, but anyway, the point is, are you telling me that you've got this money in there twice?
No, it just arrived today.
Good. The point, the point is, is that, so there's your first journal entry of the day tomorrow. If you, oh, good. All right. So, we'll take care of the money. So, the point I'm getting at is that we build out, Mary Johnson, if you want to give you the, what these things stand for, this MJCC is the Mary Johnson Children's Center. They actually go to the pool under their summer rec program and they run a tab, if you will. And then we, end of the year, we tabulate it and we send them a bill. Likewise with ISSP. And then likewise with a new summer rec program called Thunder Care, that my primary contact is Brooks, Tara Brooks. So, the sum of those three, after we've tallied them, it equals three thousand thirty-six dollars. So, that will come in. The vending machine, where there is a little bit of commissions that will be coming in. The two thou, thirty-five dollars has been received as a donation, and there's expected two thousand dollars from the Fishman family. And we will be expecting to transfer the eleven thousand dollars from the watershed fund. So, the only reason why those are highlighted is that those numbers are not actual that have been, that have actually come in and deposited, but they are one hundred percent expected. Down on the expense side, you know, obviously, anything related to labor is done. You know, all wages have been paid to the director and swim coaches. And the items that are highlighted, like workers' compensation and all the other insurances, we pay quarterly. And we just paid the second quarter. So, we will continue to pay those bills. I think I am missing one more electric bill because I know that we have not got the bill for usage through the end of the pool. So, there might be another five hundred dollars. But anyway, the point is, is that's a number that we are not used to seeing. So, the, and it is clearly on the expense side. If you notice, the revenue stream, we're about two thousand dollars above revenue. And if I remember, the council contemplated whether or not they needed to allocate eleven thousand versus nine from watershed. All right? So, as it's turned out from a revenue standpoint, we did take in two thousand dollars more. But some of that, which ends up being a wash, you'll notice when Bill talks about the hundred and twenty-two kids, that's why you see that eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. However, the arrangement that we have with the swim team is that we pay their coaches and then at the end of the year, we calculate the delta between the wages, social security, workers' compensation against the registration fees. And if we have more money, we write a check back. And so, at the last meeting, there was a check in the warrant for two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. So, even though that revenue on swim teams is, swim team is eight hundred dollars more than budgeted, you don't really feel it because it gets refunded at the other end. But clearly, on the expense side, you know, you can see that wages, you know, were extremely well managed through this. This isn't all because it rained. This is really about managing labor. All right? And Jen did, you know, a fabulous job, in my opinion, managing labor at the pool. And so, if you just, and you can see this in the swim, you can see this in the swim team as well. But again, we zero that out. I mean, you know, Michelle and Bill, Lisa, you can see that their numbers, when you add them all up, that's under budget, under budget as well. So, and then getting to chemicals, isn't that something? Isn't that something? We had the wastewater treatment guys run the water quality and it cut our expenses by fifty percent. Isn't that something? Okay. So, that's good news. Fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
City manager needs to take full credit on that.
Yeah, right. Yeah, not really. So, anyway, that's a good, that's a good number. You know, obviously, we do have some more expenses and we'll get down to the mayor's report at some point. So, I'm going to switch over to budget report. And the budget report for the current year, you know, it's still early. We have paid half of, did you want to talk about budget, Michelle?
I add a quick question. If you could explain how those three programs, Mary Johnson, ISSP and Thunder Care, what it means. ISSP, and Thunder Care, what it means when you say they run a tab?
Okay.
How, if you could just explain that, that would be great.
Sure. Okay. Yes. On the, we, at the, at the pool, there is a daily sheet, all right? So it's not a cash register down, well, there is a cash box, okay? So there is a day sheet, so that when somebody comes there, and if they, and they pay their two dollars, they write two dollars, and they just write down what they pay. However, relative to the Mary Johnson's Children's Center, and ISSP and Thunder Care, on the day sheet, we know that the Mary Johnson has three, up to three groups per day, and when they show up, they are to report the number of kids that have a pass, the number of kids that don't have a pass, and then the next group does the same. Likewise, ISSP is not like a summer program, but there's, there are folks that show up, some have passes, some don't have passes. Thunder Care operates exactly like M, Mary Johnson, except that there's only two sessions. So there's, there's three sessions of Mary Johnson, one session, if you will, all day long of ISSP, and two sessions of Thunder Care. Those run, I don't know how many weeks it is, ten weeks or something like that, all right? And at the end of the year, Joan, we split the work. Joan manages ISSP, I manage Mary Johnson and Thunder Care, and we have a spreadsheet and tallied all up and sent them a bill, and they pay it.
Send the, the bill for daily...
People who don't have passes.
Gotcha.
That's correct.
Do they pay any kind of additional fee as a group?
Straight up.
Just straight up?
No, no. Additional fee. No, no additional fee nor discount. They pay straight up.
Okay.
Adults are not charged.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Yep. I'm going, okay. Other reports. I mentioned about the grant, just a couple other items that we just recently, it was a meeting, I don't know if Jeff, you coordinated this meeting, or Diane, or Mark, but anyway, it was, it was recently a meeting, the subject was sewer vulnerabilities. I don't know who came up with that, that title, but anyway, that was the name of this meeting. And so I'll call it a bit of a brainstorming meeting. Diane, Representative Lanfer was, Lanfer was there, Mark was there, Mike was there, I was there, Jeff was there, Claire Tebs was there from regional planning. And we just really talked a lot about, you know, the sewer system, and, you know, we have a challenge here. We have a, we, we continue to have overflows, and we're, there is a clock ticking on the city of Virdens, that we have to eliminate overflows within twenty years. I think we're probably a year and a half or two into this, so the clock has been ticking. And so there was, obviously, to, to cure this is gonna, you know, cost some money. And so we spent some time talking about, about funding. So anyway, one of the, we have been very much encouraged to apply for a planning grant. Now, we are currently, we are currently underway for this sewer and stormwater asset management inventory that's going on right now. If you recall, we allocated ten thousand dollars towards a fifty, sixty thousand dollar effort to inventory all of our sewer lines, inventory all of our stormwater lines, and with that inventory, it will help us prioritize projects towards stopping the overflows. So one of the things that we talked about at the meeting was, we have a weak link, I don't know, so we call it a choke point, I guess it's a choke point, weak link. We have that today. The point is, is that the McDonough Drive pump station, you know, is the weak link in our system. You know, there's, there's two pumps there, and a force main on the bottom of the river that's supposed to send every drop of sewer that's in that pipe to the wastewater treatment plant. And in a perfect world, that's what would happen. But the fact of the matter is, that's not what happens. When we have extreme rain events or extreme snow melts, that, that pump station is not capable of getting all of the flow, although it is very diluted by rain and stormwater, but it's still polluted water that doesn't make it to, to the wastewater treatment plant. So I really feel that one of the things, that if that is our weakest link, now we have, we, a few years ago, we installed a, an overflow meter, so now when we have these events, we know how many gallons we're dealing with. So we have that data, and I would hope that we could use that data and have an engineer take a look at that McDonough Drive pump station, and see if there is something that can be done to that pump station and force main to send more water to the treatment plant, because the treatment plant actually can handle it. So the, we're being encouraged to apply for a planning grant, and the way that the planning, planning grants used to be fifteen thousand dollars was the maximum grant, twenty-five thousand dollars if it was a joint application by, by two or more municipalities, and there was no local share. That program has changed, and now the grants up to eight thousand dollars do not have a local share, and any grant above eight and not more than twenty-four, twenty? Twenty requires, is it twenty or thirty? It requires a...
I think it's twenty percent.
Six, six thousand, a, six, up to a six thousand dollar...
I think it's a six percent, so it was a...
I don't think, see, that's why I was...
Well, it was up to six thousand if you're going for the maximum, but it's, it's not, you know, if you get eleven thousand dollar grant, it's not a six thousand dollar buy, and it's...
Correct. That's why. And I don't know if it, you know, I don't, it may, if it's, if it's thirty and your local share is six, or whether or not you say, if you got a thirty thousand dollar grant, the first eight is free, and you pay a percentage up to six thousand of the difference between the project grant and the base of eight, there's a mathematical formula. The point is, of all this, I really, I, I really think that we need to study that pump station, all right? And I have been in communications with Dana, who is the primary contact for this asset management, and I really don't think that the analysis of that pump station is part of this deal, because this is really about our lines. So what I wanna do is apply for a municipal planning grant up to eight thousand dollars to, if awarded, hire an engineer to look again at that pump station, to see if there is something that we can do there. And it's, it's just kinda strange, I, you know, municipal planning grants, for years, we've always used them for writing city plans and updating zoning regulations. That's, that's what they were. And now these grants have really, they now are very broad. You know, you could plan about anything and apply for it. So there, I don't know that there's anything that's not eligible. If it's planning, it does need to be, it does need to be in your plan. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, from out of the sky, but if you've got something in your plan that, that needs some further planning, that's, it's there. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know that I need city council action for that. I'm not spending any money, but we, and, and it's not going, it's not going in until October first. So if I need something, if I need something formal, a, a resolution of support or an authorized letter, Shannon probably can straighten me out here.
I think you do need to have authorization from them for the grant, though.
But we can do that at the next, there's probably a form.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll, we will do that for you for the next meeting on the twenty-sixth. The grant application, I think it's October one or October two.
October second.
Okay. All right.
Wasn't there also some discussion about getting on a list, and we might need a resolution to get our name on the list, just to show these people, whoever it was, and please help me, you guys, that we're interested in getting help, and we want to be one of the top people on the list when they start dealing help out.
We, we met with three representatives from the, I forget which departments they were from, a couple of weeks ago, and one of the big things they brought to the table was, we really need to be able to show our interest in pursuing, making these infrastructure changes that might be looming for us. And they really encouraged us to communicate to them that we are interested in pursuing these options. However, I think we dialed some of that back by acknowledging that we're doing this asset management program, and by also then applying for this grant and looking specifically at the McDonough Drive problem, we are demonstrating that. I don't know that there's really any urgency for us to communicate to that, that to them right now.
Do you have contact with those individuals, and, and you could have that conversation with them to see?
I can.
Would you please, so that we don't get sidetracked, and we make sure that all our bases are covered?
Yes.
Please. Thank you. Mark, anything else you want to add in there?
I would just say, since today is September twelfth, and this thing's due the first or second, if you need something from us hands in, then, you know, it's a short window that we're pushing for.
Yeah.
But give a holler.
Yeah, thank you.
If something that needs to be moved or typed in.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I go to, to too many meetings, and I've lost track of how familiar the city council is with the neighborhood development area.
Is this expansion of the downtown?
Yes, it's, and I can't remember if I ever, if this was ever on a city council agenda to talk to what, that's what, okay? And what that is, is there are some, because we have a, because we have a so-called downtown, downtown development district, they, there's a new program to create a neighborhood development area that has some benefits as it relates to residential development in, in a neighborhood development area. And the neighborhood development area is supposed to be not more than a half a mile from the, from the downtown development district. And I, I really, I can't remember, Shannon and I, we've, we've done so many maps in this thing, we've lost track of where we're at. But anyway, if, if, if Shannon and I ever came to the city council with a map that showed the proposed neighborhood development area, and if that map included the Northern Gateway District, I just want to let you know is that we are going to remove that district from our application, because there is considerable pushback on any neighborhood development area that is outside of the half mile. It's regarded at, in, it's, it might be regarded as sprawl, it's feeling that it's not close enough to your downtown, thus warranting the, the benefit. So we, we, I will tell you that the Development Review Board meeting last night, one of the items on the agenda was a preliminary presentation by the folks from Housing Vermont relative to another housing project adjacent to the senior housing on Armory Lane Extension. This project, it is not an elderly, it's not a senior housing, it is a mixed housing project, but would greatly benefit from being in a designated neighborhood development district. And so Shannon and I have, we want to let you know that we really, we would, we think that there's benefits in having this neighborhood development district, and if we were to include the Northern Gateway District, we might not be able to get the designation. We, you know, I don't, we don't wanna, I don't know that there's any half a loaf here. I, I don't want to run the risk of being denied a neighborhood development district. And again, there's really is some pushback. So I just wanted to let you know, you know, I, I haven't spoke to Bob Bernstein, Reni, so I'll let you handle that, if you, if you don't mind, because, you know, we really, we wanted, you know, we wanted, we felt that it was, you know, it allows residential up there, but it just, we just, we're just getting too much pushback, so.
Well, we tried and submitted the map, including that, and, and they came back and saying that, well, maybe you shouldn't be including that, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's the way it is.
Yeah. So, so that's that one. The other one, I, I don't necessarily want to talk about it tonight, but I really think that maybe at the next meeting, we should talk about the Mahawi appeal. Just to let you all know, you know, I, you know, I don't know that it needs to be a standing item on your agenda, but when the, when the city is in court with, with a developer that has appealed a permit issued by the Development Review Board, you know, you, I want to make sure that the city council is abreast of the status of that case and how much money we're spending. Okay? Anyway.
We'll figure out how that needs to land.
Yeah.
The September, and another thing that we ought to probably look at, I, September, is sewer rates. We won't get into discussion, we just, I know that's been some discussed at some previous meetings, and we just don't want to slip it off the radar, so that, so.
I'd also like to see in September, we have that money floating around that we didn't decide where it was gonna go. You had, you had three funds, I think it was?
Oh.
That we were going to make some decision on where that was going to be, what category that was gonna be into.
Can you send...
Not into the general, but...
Well, so one of the, so the only thing that we, yeah, one thing that we did is the city council authorized the closing of the, of the fire department. And I do, I do recall, you know, the three funds, I don't know if it was tree planting or, or, but anyway, there, but there was some.
Yeah, but there was one number that was pretty large. So I just would like to address that.
Oh, the, you're talking about, what you're talking about is the land records, the land records, no, we're gonna, that's frozen for a year.
Yeah, recording.
Anyway, this is the, that's the, that's the report that has all of those funds linked, so let me, let me just...
Let me look it over, then.
So let me tell you this. This right here is an as of June thirtieth report. You're not gonna see an as of June thirtieth report again until you get the audit. So at the next meeting, I will do a fund report for, which will not have the fire truck replacement fund on it, because it's zero, and we will, we will get that report back to you for the status in FY eighteen. And that will remind us of what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'll have to look back a few minutes.
Well, Mel really cut into my supposedly ten minutes, I'm, we're already fifteen, twenty minutes late, so I'll try to fly...
I did, yeah, okay.
I gotta blame somebody. You've got broad shoulders. I'll, I'll get you extra golf balls, make up for it. So Swimming Pool Advisory Committee put in a, the minutes and notes from the, the meeting that was held recently, and this is just to let the council know the activity, what's happening. It does not set how any money's gonna be spent. Some of the things that Mel was been trying to do is get somebody here to find out what it's gonna do to probably be the, the next major project that needs to be done fairly soon, we think, is cocking around the edge of the pool. And there's some discussion whether that's a move that needs to happen, at least we, directly around the pool, we believe that that would benefit. We're not sure about going out, and the other thing is, we don't know if we got enough money to pay for it. And all these items will, will come to the council. So as to, so keep this in the back of your minds, if you would be so kind, and, and just be thinking, it looks like we got close to fifteen thousand dollars, and we don't have to spend it, but it, these are items that need to happen at some point, and so, and, and being wise in, in our management, we should at least consider the, the cocking around the edge of the pool, and whatever else we can, might be able to afford and reinvest that money, because it's just gonna make life easier come spring. We talked about dropping the water in the pool to a, a normal level, about a foot below the skimmers, and not to do anything else until spring, because other spalling and other issues may happen within the pool, and we'll drain the pool earlier and then try to get volunteers and other people to assist in patching any blowouts that happen and any other stuff that may have failed over the winter time. So I'm, I'm making that fairly short, but hopefully you've... you've had the opportunity to read, and there was a lot of good recommendations. Just till I, who'd I talk to? Oh, I talked to Jen. There was a hot water heater at one time. Some point, it got removed. We don't know when. And there's going to be more discussion about, about that. But it's nothing that needs to happen this year. Question came up about hot water at the pool. So, again.
In the change rooms?
Say again.
Is it changing rooms, or where are you talking about?
Period. Hot water.
There's no hot water in the sink or shower.
Or wash your hands, or any of that stuff. So.
There was in 1987. That's all I can tell you.
Yep. So, I don't think we, we, it's nothing that we need to take, that needs to take place this winter, but we need to know something by the beginning of the spring, as to which way we're going to head. And there's some discussion about groundwork on the outside. And the school's kind of driving that. So, has anybody on the council got any questions about what they've seen here on the?
So, we do have some things we want to try and do before winter comes, to sort of put it to bed and get ready for spring.
If I was driving the car, definitely. And, and the caulking is the main one, because we want to take and keep water out, so the, about the freezing.
Well, there's actually two different issues with caulking. You've got the expansion joint-
Right.
-which is going to keep water from getting under the pool. And then you've got the decking that's going to keep the deck from heating.
And there's some conversations, Mel and I have had a brief conversation, and I said, I'm flipping on, on the decking. Is, is there a better way to, why don't we have a side conversation about this?
I was agreeing with you, that I think the, the expansion joint really probably should be sealed before winter.
And maybe Matt might even have some comments about not doing that, let it air out over the winter. So, because I don't want to drag on and on and on. So, okay. Train station visit. Reni, Mel, who was that lady?
Amy, Carolyn Thompson.
Carolyn Thompson, Amy, Met Mark Fitzgerald. And basically, this is an advertisement, people out in TV land, if you are a nonprofit and looking to, for a place to go, you can probably get a good rent rate to occupy the space. So, that's something that we're hoping that partnership can help out with locating somebody that wants to do that. Basically, they want somebody to sell tickets, or be there to answer questions, and maybe run it as a welcome center on the side, and so, people can, and then the people hopping the bus have a place to go into, in weather, whatever. So, there's, there's a variety of stuff that's transposing there.
I have an interested nonprofit as of today, that I can't divulge, but, but that, I gave them the contact with the state to see whether they could pursue using the train station.
Excellent. And, and there is, there is the next phase platform and some other construction that is due to start next construction season, say, next spring. So, there's, they, I already started the platform in Middlebury. So, it is coming.
Mr. Mayor, just as a-
Quick aside on the train station. There was some talk about having Amtrak stop there. Is that possible? Is that even feasible?
Amtrak is coming.
This is kind of a hard question, but go ahead.
Amtrak is coming.
Okay.
It may not be till 2019 or 2020, but there's been some meetings, and an exact date hasn't been finalized yet, but it is coming back to the area.
And they are building a platform by the station in anticipation of that happening. And that's supposed to happen next year, I believe.
Yes. That's part of, they're doing some inside work and the outside work, some of the outside work.
The other part of my question relates to what Reni just said about the platform. That's a, if I remember correctly, that's a single line, main line. Right now, it's freight, at one point in time, it had three sightings. I mean, Kennedy Brothers, there was one that went into the Virgin's Building Supply, and of course, to Kramer. Well, there's only one track. Would AOT, would they not have to build a separate sighting to service?
Again, that was something that was talked briefly about.
They've, they've, they've looked at it.
They're looking at all that.
There's been made.
But that, we don't, we've asked to see some plans.
Sure.
We haven't found out where we can get access to those, if they're digitized or not. So, once we, if they are, we'll put that information out.
It would make sense, there would need to be a pull-off area for the, for the train station-
Definitely.
...to let freight go through, or other transit trains. You can't stop them on the line, the main line. Just a, just a question.
Early. Thanks, Bob. The other thing, VLTC, those documents there, from time to time, that, please don't, anybody try to read anything to here. I'm just trying to pass out information from time to time, just refreshes everybody's memory, the do's, the don'ts, about right to know, our open meeting laws, and executive section. That's, that's the only, there's no underlying message there, so it's just reference only. So, you're on.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I asked for a second. Somebody's got, Mark seconded.